For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll please.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have comments? Anyone? Yes, Alderman Clistic.
Thanks, Mayor. Madam Mayor, communication from Adolf and Nancy Kunevich. They have some concerns with regards to water and mud showing up on the end of their driveway. I'll reach out to Dan Gombach with regards to this. I believe they might have a small sump pump that's throwing water on top of there. So we'll take a look at it. It might have been ignored for a little while, but we'll take a look at it. Have Dan or Chris take a glance at it.
Right. What day did Dan, Public Works Director Dan Gombach had surgery? What day did he have the surgery?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday?
Yeah.
Last Tuesday, so he'll be, I'm sure he'll be relying on Chris and Dennis in the Water Department.
Yeah, Chris is going to be out for a while, too. Also had surgery. So if anything's sent to me, I'll make sure that we have municipal services take a look at it.
Did anyone in the audience want to address the council? And we have two individuals that just walked in. Hi. Are you here because of a class that you're taking?
Hi, she lives here.
She, alrighty. Guess what? I'm going to call on you to come forward and tell us about yourself. Come on up. Oh, I moved that.
The dais.
Dais out of the way, and now it needs to be put back in place. Can you, yeah, push it up forward? Thanks, Alderman Clistic. Well, there you go. Okay.
He's got it.
Yes. It's on rollers, so it wasn't that hard.
Hello.
Hello. We would love to find out about you.
My name is John Compton. I go to Elmhurst College. I'm from Lexington, Kentucky. So the small city government is not what I'm in, and I'm taking a suburbia class.
A suburbia class.
And I had to pick a suburb that I was going to do research and write a little project on. So I asked my friend Amber, who lives here where she lived, and she said Darien. And so I started looking it up, and I'm doing my project on it.
Do you have enough to write about?
Uh, yeah. I'm about halfway done with it. I did the, like, the economy, and I looked at the zoning map of
Okay.
how y'all set all that up and everything.
Well, if you need any information, I'm available, but all the, Brian Vanna, our city administrator, you could get his card and call him with any questions you might have.
And if you are Googling, make sure you put Darien, Illinois.
Oh, yeah, not Connecticut.
Yeah, did you notice that?
No, yeah, yeah. Also Panama. There's a part of Panama that's called Darien.
No kidding, really?
So that's interesting. Yeah, it's, it's got the little thingy over the E.
Ismus of Darien. It's called the Ismus of Darien.
Yes.
Wow.
But, yeah.
We learn something new every day. Well, good luck on your report.
Alright.
I'm glad you picked Darien. Thanks, Amber.
It's just full of useless information.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay, I guess.
I should go on Jeopardy.
No more comments from the audience? Alright, let's move to the approval of the minutes of the goal-setting session, October 29th. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Discussion? Then the roll, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
The goal-setting minutes have been approved. The next item is B, the minutes of the November 5th, 2018 city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Discussion? Then the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Clistic, yes.
Yeah, just really quickly, for the quick goal-setting session, I went to Michigan this past weekend. I did notice on Michigan City, Indiana, they do have Michigan City lit up at night. So maybe that's something, I don't know if the staff wants to look at, but all they do is have a sign, and it's lit up on the background. It says Michigan City, Indiana.
On a bridge going into the city?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Well, that's right, Alderman Belzak brought that up before.
On your commute, I think, there's, did you notice Elk Grove Village has a sign?
It's a beautiful sign right at Devon Avenue.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's lit up. I've not been by it at night.
It was there during the day.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Okay, so the roll, please.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
MacIver.
Abstain.
Vaughn.
Aye.
I have six ayes and one abstention.
The minutes have been approved. Let's move to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, I have one receiving communications. It was with the principal of Hinsdale South. We had a great conversation last week, and she brought up, you know, I asked her if there's anything that we could do for the city to help them or support them. And she mentioned the light pole signs that they have on the streets. They have one right now, and she was, you know, she expressed interest to get more. And I said, I can see, I'll see what I can do to see if the city would get behind you and support you with getting 10 more banners put up throughout the city. And I think that would show our support for Hinsdale South, the support for the students, a solidarity in the community to really get behind Hinsdale South with getting more signs.
You know, we, I saw all of the communications, and that's a problem for us.
Okay.
Because when we were first discussing the banners that we did end up getting, it was a case of, you know what, if we take, we allow one organization to put up banners, then we can't stop anybody from putting up banners. So I don't know how we would handle that. And if they wanted to put them up, they would have to, I think they'd have to pay for them.
The change was, we approved us, obviously, putting banners up, but also a governmental entity. That's why with the high school, when we talked to them, it was one of their subgroups of parents, I believe. I forget which group did. But we let them know it has to be with the high school. The high school got involved, made the request, put up one banner. And I think they've talked to Lisa last couple of days about, they were already in the process of purchasing another one.
Okay.
So if it's, as long, if the library, the schools, the parks, the county, any governmental agency does have approval, but the policy is for they would.
They would have to buy it.
They would have to purchase it.
I think you're asking.
Yeah, I was asking for the city to.
Us to buy it, yeah.
Where would these signs, where would these banners be going?
Throughout the city, just to show the support.
Around the city or just around the school?
Well, like on 75th Street, they had asked to put some there and throughout the area.
Because the other half of town is Downers Grove South.
We had one by the clock tower on Plainfield Road.
I remember seeing one right around there.
Well, where are those banner locations? Because they're not all over. They don't have, they're just kind of right around Cass and 75th and Plainfield, so.
I thought maybe they wanted.
You mean our banners?
By the school.
Yeah, they're up and down, they're up and down 75th, Plainfield, Cass.
Right, but they're not, they don't go, like, everywhere.
No, the main Cass, 75th corridor.
It would be within wherever they have to, wherever they could put them, you know.
Well, they would be competing with our locations, too. That would be a problem, you know, if we, so if, I would imagine if they want to put more up around their school, that would be fun.
Yeah, we told them that, you know, if they want banners up, and we could, you know, it's just more or less a discussion. You know, they'll know the locations. If they ask if they could put a banner by the clock tower, or, you know, throughout where their district lies, that's fine with us, too. We interchange some of the banners, and, you know, it's a variety of the banners. So if they want, we would put them up. But, yeah, we just, I didn't have authority to purchase on behalf.
Yeah, why don't you, no, why don't you reach out to Picorni?
We actually, I set up a meeting. We're going to meet, we're going to meet next week.
And let her know that, you know, it's on you if you want to buy more, and, you know, you can limit it to your locations there at school.
Sure.
Okay. Alrighty. I understand your, the issue that you want to reach out to them. We've done a lot with them.
Yeah, I'm not sure because this is my first rodeo.
If you see all those, if you see all those signs there at the football field, that was with us, you know, with our cooperation. That, first of all, our ordinance said that the signs had to face inward.
Inward.
But the city chose to allow them to make them outward because they felt, or I should say, the Hinsdale South Boosters Club was really the originator of the ideal. Along with this high school, they felt that they wouldn't get the bang for the buck with the businesses if the banners only faced inward. So hopefully, they're reaping some benefits from those businesses. But, and I remember going to speak to District 86 School Board over the food pantry over at Hinsdale South. What a challenge, let me put it that way, challenge that was. But, but yes, we've done, we've done a lot with Hinsdale South.
I think along those lines, there are, we did more of it previously, and we had more information. But a lot of the recognitions, you know, you had asked about recognizing the school for its rankings.
Yeah.
But historically, you know, conference champs, straight A students, those types of things. And obviously, the council always loves doing that, and it's very nice because ours' meetings are on cable TV. So, you know, we're going to resurrect that a bit more, too, so there could be more recognition at the council meetings and continue that.
I guess one of the coaches from, actually, Downers South left a message for me. Their girl, the girls' track team came in third in state, and she wanted me to come to the ceremony that week. And I couldn't because I have a full-time job, but I left a message that, please let, get, if you want, bring the, bring the whole team to city council. We love to do this with the kids, and we would, you could throw that out to the principal there. We love to have these kids. We've had the cheerleaders from Hinsdale South here. I mean, we've had the wrestling teams here. I mean, we've done a lot.
I'll put another email reminder out to all the school districts, you know, to remind them.
We really have never gotten into scholastics, though. That's something we probably should do more of.
Yeah, well, you know, things that should be recognized, that the school might recognize students, and it ends there, so something that we can do for any district that touches Darien.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, other communications to share? And let's move on to the mayor's report. And there's one item on the, the mayor's report this evening. It's a motion to authorize the city attorney to file a petition to intervene in the Sterigenics case. I just wanted to give a brief history about that. We, in October, October 1st, I think, actually, was the date that we approved the resolution asking to stop, stop the operation at Sterigenics. And at the same time, we asked that the Illinois Department of Health include the city of Darien in their cancer research study, the cancer study of incidence of cancer. And then we also have been working with the Illinois EPA and the US EPA to do air quality testing throughout Darien, too. So this is adjunct. It happened to be, well, in the meantime, the state's attorney for DuPage County and the Attorney General filed a lawsuit against Sterigenics to either get them to stop operation or prove that they are, they are safe. And our city attorney happened to be meeting with State's Attorney Berlin recently, and he brought up the idea about the petition to intervene. If we could do that, because we do know that Willowbrook has made the same motion to intervene. So that's where we're at right now. Why we have this on the city council, I didn't want to wait for this, to discuss it tonight and then have it on a future city council meeting. I wanted to get it moving right away. What would this, what this would do is, we would, in this motion, we would be authorizing our city attorney to draft this, this motion to intervene. And of course, we would want to know what that, what that includes, and obviously, we would have to meet with our attorney Murphy after he has drafted that to learn exactly what this cost would be and what it would involve. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to file a petition to intervene in the Sterigenics case. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any discussion? I think we're pretty much on board. I mean, we're probably beating a dead horse by talking.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I know this is to shut them down, but is there any punitive damages or anything to go after for property values or any of that? Or this is just to shut them down?
This is way too early to ask that question, yeah.
I think, you know, like many lawsuits, sometimes they're settled out, sometimes there's, you know, a verdicts. So that's all down the road a bit.
Okay.
And as the mayor mentioned, you know, John will be at a subsequent meeting to talk about the litigation and things like that, which is one of the subjects that the council's allowed to talk about in executive session. So you'll be, you know, you'll have a chance to talk more confidentially about that.
Has Burr Ridge or any other cities joined in? Western Springs?
Just Willowbrook so far. Burr Ridge, we haven't heard too much from them. The mayor just stepped down. So I don't know what their actions will be. Any other discussion? Then the roll, please.
MacIver.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has been approved. Let's move to the city clerks' report.
I have one item, Madam Mayor. City offices will be closed on Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, November 23rd, in observance of Thanksgiving.
Yes, and I want to go back to, under the mayor's report, I failed to mention that the EPA will be holding a town hall on November 29th on the subject of Sterigenics. It will be held at Ashton Place, and that will, that town hall meeting will start at 7:00 PM. They will be having an open house from 3:00 to 6:00, in which the Illinois EPA and other entities connected with the EPA will be showing their wheres or having information, I guess, is what the, what they're going to be doing. I think even the Fire Protection District is going to have a table. We will not be having a table because we're in the same boat as the residents of all of this area. We're looking for answers from the EPA. So that is, this is their meeting, and we are encouraging residents to attend. And why not? If you have questions, very specific questions that you want to have addressed, you can go to the US EPA website now and put your questions in there so that they will be answering those the night of the town hall meeting. And I would advise residents to do that so that you would know specifically that your questions would be answered. Let's move on to the city administrators' report.
Just one item, Mayor. As you know, Dan's out for a bit, so if you do have anything relating to municipal services, send it on, and we'll make sure it gets taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Department head information, Chief Thomas?
The month of reports out, and I took an opportunity this month to discuss juvenile issues. More about how the police can interact with juveniles. Talked about street adjustments, station adjustments, referral programs, juvenile court services, all those different types of things, and steps to try to redirect behavior and thought patterns of juveniles. Trying to keep them from having a record that may impact them further down the road. Discussion about SROs and juvenile officers and those type of things, just to try to give people a flavor of what happens to a juvenile when they, when they do offend. And ways that the police department works with the juvenile, works with the schools, work with the parents in order to get some type of justice yet, get some redirection done at the same time.
You had quite, it was quite extensive, all the steps that you can take, and I'm sure you routinely take in handling juveniles in situations. It's interesting that it starts with the police officer that is involved at the initial incident
Correct.
that actually guides the process in which he feels, he or she feels, is best for the juvenile.
It's one of the great things that is given to the police, and it's also a great weight, is that the discretion that's used. And sometimes it's important for people to understand how the police use that discretion, and all those different ways that juveniles interact with parents, interact with school, interact with authority, interact with each other, and try to get to a best resolution without, you know, a big hammer. But we were talking at the police committee, and sometimes that pendulum swings way too hard. And sometimes there's more harm done because the, a heavy hand, and sometimes a lot of harm's done because the hand wasn't heavy enough soon enough. And so trying to get that in the sweet spot is a little bit of an art, a little bit of a science.
Any questions for the chief?
Just a quick one. My daughters were involved in peer jury, and they found it very rewarding and successful. How does one make a decision to not go to, who makes the decision, or what discretion is made by whom, to send someone to a peer jury rather than having, going to juvenile court?
Well, it's actually a very timely question, because we met today at Police Committee. May or may not know that peer jury in this area has been done away with since 2017. Downers Grove saw that as having a lot of merit, and so Downers Grove Police Department's bringing it back, and they asked any surrounding areas that wanted to join, to join with them. And so next city council meeting, you'll have that, that type of request. So hopefully, we'll do that. It's a pilot program for six months, and try to reinstate that. And I agree with you that both the offender that's getting some kind of deferral, a referral program, out of that gains. Lot of restorative-type justice things, you know, dealing with victim, dealing with the community, dealing with the offender in order to try to make things right best you can. The individuals that sit on that peer jury also have a great learning experience by seeing what happens and giving some great thought to how that's going to be disposed of. So that's important. But to your question, more of how, where that decision point is for the officer. And what try to do is the least intrusive, but have the best result, if it makes sense. So if the officer on the scene believes that this kid made a, you know, it's a very minor incident, maybe quasi-criminal or non-criminal curfew, truancy, something like that, take the kid home, have a conversation with mom and dad, and be done with it. Next step up was station adjustment, and again, low-level issue. There's no need to send them to juvenile court services, so they'll deal with it at the station. And then the next step up is, you know, some type of referral program, and peer jury is one of those intermediate steps that we'd like to see. Instead of versus, you know, jumping from station adjustment right to courts. There should be something in the middle. And the courts can obviously go backwards, too. They have all kinds of referral programs as well. But, so the officer makes a decision on how much involvement the parent is going to have in a peer jury. The parent has skin in the game. They have to pay a hundred dollar processing fee, administrative fee. The kid has to agree to whatever the peer jury comes up with, whether that's some type of community service, an apology letter to the victim, however that works out for that process. So it's really based on that officer and some set criteria, you know, with how many times that juvenile's been in front of peer jury or station adjustment or juvenile court service. Again, the cooperation with the parents and all kinds of different things, you know. I had a situation in Aurora, and the guy's paralegal now, but he talked about when he grew up, he was a wrestler and a part of the choir band. And his parents never came to a single wrestling match or a single band performance. But when he got in trouble, those parents were there, and they were ready to deal with the problem. So, you know, it's nice to see that, but it's also, it'd be better to, you know, work on that positive side versus the negative reinforcement all the time. So it's really a discussion and a decision that the, that officer's going to make, and the officer's generally going to make that lesser decision to send them to peer jury versus sending them on to juvenile court services. And then obviously, when you're getting in that felony level and the higher misdemeanors, Class A's, Class Bs, most of those are going to probably go to juvenile court services, but they don't have to. Felonies would, but not misdemeanors.
It's going to, the peer jury is going to start back up in 2019. Will we?
Correct. The hope is to start January 1, run it through June 30th. Sometime before June, beginning of June, end of May, we would make a decision about, hey, this is looking good, or we need these tweaks before we move forward, or some type of decision made about how that program is working and how that program is presented.
Will we have students from the city of Darien as peer judges?
They already have, the peer judges are done. I think they had 66 names, so there was a lot of kids that were
Wow, good.
involved. I know there's been at least two training sessions. I'm not sure how many were in each of those training sessions, if they're done or they have more to go. So it's moving along. They're getting primed and ready to kick it off on January 1.
Okay, okay. Anything else for the chief? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you. Just a quick note. I did have a few residents over the last year that did reach out to me that wanted to see a peer jury brought back to Darien, so. Had some, some comments made in form with me.
Well, we started it. Chief Campo, Officer Campo started peer jury. I can't remember how many years ago, but
Yeah, in the late 90s.
Yeah, it originated with the city of Darien.
We brought Aurelia Paczinski in. She actually met in our police training facility. We had the Willowbrook Police Chief, the Darien Police Chief, a number of chiefs from other departments, and we decided to rather than go it alone as a city, that we'd have the township do it. And there was a woman by the name of Lori Manczinski. And Lori, with the township office, was the one who decided, who really ran it. And I don't know if Lori's still involved, or if she was involved up until 2017. But we had it in Oak Lawn, and we used to use it in Oak Lawn. And Aurelia Paczinski was really the one who got it going in Cook County. So it was fairly successful, and I remember we actually took a field trip to watch a peer jury session, see what it was like. And it really, the kids were actually harder on one another than, than the adults would have been, but it really was a program that worked well.
Thanks.
I had also received a request by Alderman Kenny on two topics, and I appreciate the phone call ahead of time because if you asked me during the session, I would say, I don't know, I'll have to get back to you. But I don't have to say that because you called me ahead of time. So I appreciate that. His comment was, uh...
Something in the report?
Yes, it's on Calls for Service, in page 35. And it had to deal with shots fired, and had a concern about that category going up 120%. So I was able to look at, look at those to give you a little bit of understanding. And understand that shots fired isn't always shots fired, somebody's, you know, firing off a firearm or something. It's just the way that somebody has called 911, or actually, more of these calls come in on a non-emergency number, and say that there was, they heard shots fired. And so they could, you know, anywhere from a firework, a car backfiring, to murder. Also included in shots fired is subject to what a weapon. It could be a firearm, a baseball bat, a knife, anything that somebody felt looked odd, and they called in that suspicious activity. And then there's also shots fired. Again, remember that this is something somebody hears and not necessarily something that somebody sees. So we respond there. So with that being said, I looked at 2017, and out of the category of shots fired, there was six incidents of shots being fired. Out of, out of those six, one was an out-of-town assist. So five occurred in Darien. All those were cleared by the responding officer with notes of suspicious noise. And then the disposition was entered as unfounded. So what that means is the officer found no evidence of shots being fired. No shell casings, no eyewitnesses. That projectile has to go someplace. It wasn't found, no victim was found, all those different types of things. So, and you do all that investigation, and you can't figure out where those shots were fired. So for, in reality, it's hard to say whether one occurred or not, but there is no evidence of a shot being fired.
Chief, did I, and those, did I hear you right, saying more calls are coming in on non-emergency?
Yes.
For, for those? Okay.
Which, I'm not sure what that means. I don't know if they don't believe it's an emergency, or what that, how to interpret that. It's, it just, when I was looking at the things, I didn't, it's just a category, one or two columns over from there on a spreadsheet, and I just saw it and just, just thought it was that. Don't really know what to say about it.
So if you show up to a place where a gun was shot, there's casings, and do you mention that, that shots fired in reverse? Even though maybe someone didn't report it, but you're at a crime scene, and there is a lot of casings. Does that get reported as shots fired, or no?
No. The, it was talking about calls for service and crime. So the call for service would still stay as a shots fired. This year, we had the double murder. That was called in as shots fired. The person had no idea that what was occurring in that apartment. They just knew that there was, what they felt were shots being fired, and in fact, it was. So the, that call for service will stay the same, but the report and the disposition will be different. And so, in those, in those situations...
And so in those situations, you do have an actual shots fired at that point in time. In 2018, even though the category had 22, the actual incidents where there was a shots fired was 10. And that situation, two were from outside agencies, leaving eight that occurred in Darien. So from five to eight is a 60% increase. Any increase, obviously, we don't like. Any report of a shots fired, we don't like. So, but it is a little bit less than what's on the report. Within those, four were cleared with notes of suspicious noise and disposition of unfounded, very similar to what had occurred in the reports in 2017. One had an officer note of unlawful use of a weapon. I did not have time to look up the report. I would like to finish that, diving into that one a little bit to see where that lies. My guess is that there were not shots fired, just because if it had been shots fired, the report probably would have read aggravated discharge of a firearm or reckless discharge of a firearm, because you always report the higher hierarchy and the most serious offense. And UUW would not be, unlawful use of a weapon wouldn't be the most serious offense in that case. But that's one I need to look at. One had a disposition note of criminal damage to property. Again, I have to look at that one, same type of thing, if there were shots fired and a round went through a window, say. It should not be titled criminal damage to property. Should, again, should be titled aggravated discharge of a firearm or reckless discharge of a firearm, depending on the circumstances. So those two I still need to look at. And the last two were cleared, they were fireworks. So again, I appreciate the heads up, so I can give you analysis versus telling you, I don't know.
The reason, the reason I called the chief on that, because I didn't want to ask that question here on TV, him not having a response and then cause a, cause some kind of a panic. So systematically did what.
And it is important, you see those types of notations, but again, it's how people are interpreting and calling 911, how the dispatcher's interpreting it, putting it into the system. And then dispatching, the dispatcher's sending a squad car there, and then the squad car getting there and doing the investigation. So there's a lot of steps, and it's great to know that those pieces of information, just like what difference between call for service and crime and those type of things. So hopefully that alleviates a little bit of some fears. The other question that Alderman Kenny had was regarding citizen assist and officer initiated activity, and they're up almost 93%. So I took a look at that, and it's building checks that were driving that huge increase. There was 380 to date, there's been 386 building checks where the officers are rattling doors and seeing, making sure things are secure. And in 2017, there was 95 year to date. So that's what's driving that number. The good thing is, is in 2018, we found 127 open doors, and in 2017, there was 151. So there's been a significant decrease in finding doors. So hopefully checking doors and reminding people to lock their stuff up has made a significant change. And then all the others are, there's a number, again, category versus incident. The category citizen assist, there's a number of incidents, building checks, well being checks, citizen assist, found property, open doors, lockouts, all those different types of things, all fall under that major category. All those are generally the same. Well being check, 15 this year, 16 last year. Citizen assist, 64 this year, 62 last year. So those are all the same, pretty much the same. Like I said, the big change that drove that number change was the increase in the number of building checks.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay. Is there any report, Alderman Services?
No report, ma'am.
Okay. Let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181914 in the amount of $977,587.17 from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended November 8th in the amount of $259,103.36 for a total to be approved of $1,236,690.53.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzek, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any discussion? Any questions for the treasurer? In the roll, please.
Belzek?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. Do you want to go over the monthly report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the monthly report for October 31st, which represents six months through our fiscal year, represents general fund year to date revenue, $9,228,144, expenditures of $6,735,944, for current balance of $3,697,150. Water fund year to date revenue, $3,747,189, expenditures of $2,894,919 for a current balance of $1,882,895. Motor fuel tax fund year to date revenue of $281,539, expenditures of $166,468 for a current balance of $504,510. Water depreciation fund year to date revenue, $3,451,058, expenditures of $1,379,925, current balance of $2,185,177. And the capital improvement fund year to date revenue of $216,606, expenditures of $3,640,66 for a current balance of $5,698,586.
Questions for the treasurer on the monthly report? And it looks like the revenue, property taxes, sales tax are doing okay. The revenue, they're beating, let's see, are they beating budget?
Yeah. So they're exceeding last year's, and they are currently exceeding budgeted amounts, yes.
Okay. That's a good sign.
Yeah.
Sales tax, yes.
Also, our earnings, our interest rate, we, if you recall, we had a choice of going with a fixed interest rate in our funds of one and a quarter percent or letting it float. And fortunately, we took the floating. At this point, we're getting 1.81% on our, basically our funds available, so getting close to 2%.
Wow.
And so it's dramatically different than the 75 basis points in last year.
Yeah, that's definitely an improvement. Although the market, my goodness, down 400 again today. Ouch.
It'll be up again.
Well, we're about, but we're about 200 for the whole entire year, right?
Oh, man. It hurts.
It's about flat. NASDAQ is up for the year, the overall market's about flat for the year, which actually, if you look at it at the beginning of the year, most people were projecting maybe an increase of 5% to 7%. So typically, not too far off, but people don't know. I mean, long run, it'll be up. We just can't tell you when or by how much.
And crystal ball's in the shop, right?
Okay. Let's move on to standing committee reports. Do the chairman have reports to share? Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this evening's police committee meeting, we approved the meeting minutes from the September 17th, 2018 police committee meeting, and I'll submit those for the record. Also, based on our discussions, we don't anticipate a December meeting, but if there were agenda items that come up, that meeting would take place on Monday, December 17th at 6:00 PM in the police department training room.
Thank you. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While we're scheduled for a meeting next Monday for municipal services on November 26th, I was wondering, since Mr. Gompik is probably going to be out, if we don't have a lot of agenda items, maybe we could reschedule that for another date.
Well, we're planning on moving the meeting forward. We have the agenda we worked out today and.
We do have.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead with the meeting. I'm not sure if Dan will be there.
Okay.
I'll be there, Steve will be there, and if we need Dan, he can be there remotely on the phone.
Okay.
At what time will that be?
6:30 here in the council chamber.
Okay. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda related. Do any of the aldermen have questions, comments on items that are on the agenda this evening? Any one in the audience want to address the council on any of the items on the agenda this evening? And let's move to old business, and there being no old business, and there is no consent agenda this evening, I'll move right to new business. Item A is consideration of a motion to grant a raffle of the raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Arts Council. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn, discussion? In the roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzek?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has been approved. Item B is a motion, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance levying taxes for general and special corporate purposes for our fiscal year commencing on the first day of May 2018 and ending on the 30th day of April 2019. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzek. I want to point out, we are asking for no additional funds. It's the same assessment that we asked for last year. Any question, any discussion?
This has to go one more time still, all right? Because this is the initial one to DuPage County, and then there's one more revised or no, this is.
No, this is it.
Okay. Because then notice that says you have to submit it very early and a clerk, but then you go back one more time to confirm?
No, no.
Well, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, this is filed prior to the, prior to January 1st, basically. And then really, it goes to the county. They do all the calculations, and they do preliminary numbers. They'll send preliminary numbers back to us, and the city council could approve those, they could abate, they could, you can't increase. You could always abate, though. You have time to do that. I think that's probably what you're thinking.
Yeah, we do, we do get to see those numbers.
And they give us a final, at the end of March, they'll give us what are basically our final numbers, yes.
Yeah. And it's usually during the budget process where we take a look at that and say, yeah, we can abate those, this one or not, we'll have to let it go through. Okay. Any other questions? In the roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzek?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion's been approved. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of the taxes for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2018. That's why you think it's backwards. It seems backwards, because we're already into this budget year. Yes, the first day of May 2018, ending on the 30th day of April 2019, in and for the city of Darien Special Service Area Number One, known as Tara Hill. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzek. During our discussion, we, what we brought up was, and someone questioned it, because it's been, it was put in place when.
Back in 1990.
Yeah, when Tara Hill was first developed. We didn't surprise the residents there. They knew at the time that they bought the houses, there would be a special assessment on their, on their taxes for the, for the care of the detention areas, the wetlands in their subdivision. And that's what we vote on now. That money is used for taking care of those wetlands. We have to do a burn, I think we said every three years, we have to do a burn of the wetlands, and, but there are other issues that we have to take care of on their property. Any other discussion on that item? In the roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzek?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has been approved. Let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Tuesday night, I had an opportunity to attend the District 86 Board of Education meeting, which was held to discuss contingency plans that the board was going to set up with regard to the failure of the referendum. It was an interesting discussion. A lot of people did bring up the point that this area, Darien and parts of Burr Ridge, probably would not be conducive to passing a referendum as long as the perception still exists that Hinsdale South is less than Hinsdale Central. And they felt the board really needed to sell that to the residents. But the most, more important point is, they do have $46 million worth of life safety and ADA complacency work that they have to do. They don't have bonding power enough to do that, so they're looking to having to cut their budget, probably between $3 and $5 million a year for each of the next five years in order to meet that $46 million bill. And Alderman MacIver knows this much better than I, but they have projects that are A, B, and C, and A has to be done within 12 months.
12 months.
B projects, and C projects within a five year period. And tonight, they're meeting to determine those areas which they were talking about cutting, talking about consolidating of staff, cutting curricular areas, cutting, quote curricular areas, in order to make that life safety work. And there were a number of people who wanted to see another referendum in April just for the life safety and the ADA work. But the board is not, the board has to make a plan for what they're going to do for these projects. They can't count on a referendum passing, so they, they're taking the next step, and that is to develop a contingency plan for dealing with that. But it was a most interesting meeting. Met a lot of people that were very upset that it did not pass. Talked to some of the board members, and it's really quite interesting that some of them even blamed it on the fact that they changed the boundaries and they got rid of the buffer zone.
No, that's not it, yeah.
That's not it. But it was, it was an interesting meeting to attend, and, you know, Hinsdale South is in our community. It's our, it's our high school. And Darien residents do have that perception that the district as a whole kind of looks down on, this is the secondary school. And I realize Downers South and Downers North has that same. But what was, what I found was most interesting is they were trying to say that that did not exist, but a board member whose children were going to have to go to South because he was in that buffer zone, was arguing that maybe they should go back and revisit that so that his children could go back and go to Hinsdale Central, which just gave the wrong perception.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's for sure.
But it was an interesting meeting, and I just wanted to share with the council that I was there, and, you know, it's going to impact our school.
Well, I, they are, I know that they have, there's a limitation of how many times they can have a referendum.
Right.
And after that, they're barred from doing it for so many years. But does anybody know?
They can have, they can have one in April, April 2nd, but if they don't, and if they don't do it April 2nd, the next time it could do would be March, I think of 2020.
2020.
Yeah, that's what they were saying. And the board isn't really sold on the idea of another referendum right now. While they feel better because they did better than the $76 million referendum, they really don't, they have issues they have to deal with with regard to voters in our area and parts of Burr Ridge that feed into the Hinsdale South area.
Quick question for Alderman Marques. For the ADA stuff, is there like a time requirement, or how do they get away so long without not having ADA stuff?
Maybe Alderman.
I don't know, I was just. Yeah, I'm not an architect, but the, as long as there's no major renovation going, it's kind of like grandfathered, just like any other things in the building would be that once you touch it, then you have to make it ADA compliant. Okay.
Ah, okay.
But the life safety work is a whole different category, but then again, who determines what's life safety, correct?
Yeah, that, so every 10 years, and it's, every school's on a different cycle. On a school district from K through 12, they have to go through the life safety survey process. And that is, they hire an architect or engineer who basically goes through all the buildings and rates them A, B, or C, and lumps them into categories of, you know, mechanical systems, electrical, plumbing, architectural, things like that. And As have to be completed in 12, and then that gets approved by the board, and then it goes to the state for a final approval. And once that's approved by the state, it kind of becomes the guide that the school has to follow in order to complete the work. So anything that's in the A category, they have, once it's approved by the state, they have 12 months to complete. If it's a B, they have five years to complete, and then C is kind of like, it'd be nice if we could do this. But it's not necessarily required. So, but they still, even though it's health life safety funds that are used, they still have to have those dollars to pay for those improvements.
So what you're saying is that Hinsdale School District 86 went through that whole
Yeah, I'm not an architect, but as long as there's no major renovation going, it's kind of like grandfathered, just like any other things in the building would be, that once you touch it, then you have to make it ADA compliant.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
But the life safety work is a whole different category, but then again, who determines what's life safety, correct?
Yeah, so every 10 years, and it's, every school's on a different cycle. A school district from K through 12, they have to go through the life safety survey process, and that is, they hire an architect or engineer who basically goes through all the buildings and rates them A, B, or C, and lumps them into categories of mechanical systems, electrical, plumbing, architectural, things like that. And As have to be completed in 12, and then that gets approved by the board, and then it goes to the state for a final approval. And once that's approved by the state, it kind of becomes the guide that the school has to follow in order to complete the work. So anything that's in the A category, they have, once it's approved by the state, they have 12 months to complete. If it's a B, they have five years to complete, and then C is kind of like, it'd be nice if we could do this. But it's not necessarily required. So, but they still, even though it's health life safety funds that are used, they still have to have those dollars to pay for those improvements.
So what you're saying is that Hinsdale School District 86 went through that whole process of having all those assessments, so they knew going into the referendum exactly what they had to do. You know, I don't think they did a bad job of getting out the word, you know, about most of the work. It was split pretty much between both schools, you know, but you're right, I guess the perception is that we're the stepchild, and, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take to get over that.
Well, my concern is when they were talking about cutting co-curricular activities and curriculum, they actually were talking about cutting AP classes or not hold, and, you know, as a former educator, you don't cut AP class. You don't cut curriculum, because curriculum is your lifeblood, and that's why these two schools are listed as outstanding schools, because of their curriculum. But they were talking about consolidating division chairs, co-curriculars, all kinds of things. Someone even made the comment, maybe we only need one football team per District 86, and not at one at both schools.
Oh, wow.
Which, transportation was an issue. They were talking about cutting transportation for kids. The hope is, and my hope is, that if they do decide to cut co-curricular program, they better be really careful about what they cut at South versus what they cut at Central. I just hope they do it right.
Is there after-school activities? I mean, you know, will we get more police calls, because kids don't have nothing to do, are they out and about?